Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget and CIP Overview Work Session on Thursday, April 11, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell here, Michelle Lynn, Jenny Koch here, Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item four is our Capital Improvement Plan Overview. Item 4.1 is a presentation discussion and potential direction to staff on the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Knutson, I'll start off with you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Good morning, public. This is our very first budget work session for 2024 as we work ourselves into the fiscal year 25 budget. So a lot of thought, a lot of preparation goes into today as we try to use our crystal ball and kind of foresee what we want as far as the revenues and the city's financial condition, future projects. You know, as we're looking 12, 18 months out in some cases, right? So well, you'll see presented before you is a lot of effort and a lot of work. I'd like to thank the budget team, which is Jill Olson and Angie Bocken, Allison Blum, and Anthony Kozlowski. And a special thanks to all the department heads for bringing forward a very, very frugal budget that reflects needs, not wants. It's also a reflection of us listening to the council. It's a reflection of staff listening to the to the public and doing our best to listen, assess, and prioritize. And hopefully, the CIP budget you see before you this morning is a direct reflection of that. Of course, we'll be going over the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan budget today. We'll come back on May 9th and look at the operating budget. So that's important because there might be some questions about, I thought we were going to do this and I thought we were going to do that. We certainly probably will. But that might be presented at the May 9th meeting. For example, last year, we talked about an ejection of unencumbered general fund dollars for parks maintenance. That will be in the budget that we presented on May 9th, but that's not a CIP project. So keep that in mind as we go through this process. The CIP that we presented is fully funded through either grants, general fund dollars, user fees, or otherwise. But that's important. So every project you see that will be presented to council, there is a plan to fund that project. There's no recommendation for any issuance of debt, and there's no recommendation for any increases in taxes. So I know that's very, very important to the council. We have a few. Ron Foggan, our Public Works Director, will present. He'll talk a little bit about some of the CIP projects that's happening right now or that were recently completed in this fiscal year. And he'll talk a little bit about some of the projects that we're looking at for the first year of the CIP and have some conversations about years two, three, four, and five. But those are kind of work in progress. We want to plan for projects in that vein. But every year, we come back at this work session, have conversations with council and the team, and make sure that we're on track and heading in that right direction. This is the time every year where I apologize for stepping on toes, but I can't help myself. Just the projects that have been completed this year are pretty phenomenal. You look at the projects, including what we've done at Site Six, and that's looking great and nearing completion. Island walking path. We're on our way with Station Seven. We have Vedos wells under construction and in design, improvements to our wastewater treatment plants. Our main lines for sewer and water are all being maintained and replaced to the best of our ability. Investments within the police building. Of course, we're sitting in the courthouse on our new council chambers. So that's a direct reflection of the hard work of the city council and the team. And then council has directed staff, and we're following that direction about we need to invest into our road network within the community. So that's a few things that are happening now that it might bleed over into the next fiscal year as well. And then we got some kind of exciting projects. I do want to make mention because you look at that, you might see a large number here or there, especially when you look at the water budget. There are plans and applications that have taken place for grants. So we may or may not get that grant. For example, we have a $290 million BOR grant that we have applied for. If we were awarded that $290 million, it would go towards the construction of a new water treatment plant, as well as a renovation for an existing water treatment plant. We don't know. It's probably unlikely that we get anywhere near that amount. But if we don't plan for it through the budget process, if we don't budget the scenario of us receiving that grant, then we can't utilize those funds. So you'll see some of that that's in there. I started naming names. I apologize, but we've done such a great job with grants. Vajat Sari, Heidi, under the leadership of, I think, Kozlowski. We're really bringing in some grant funds, and it's pretty exciting. So you're going to see that reflected within the budget as well, too. But again, if we don't budget for those, then if we get it, then we're just staring at dollars that we can't spend. So I'll stop stepping on toes. And then I think, is it Ron that are going to lead us off this morning? And then Jill and Angie will be part of that presentation as well. With mayor, I can, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Ron. Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you. Manager Knutson, really appreciate that. Not stepping on toes. You just made my presentation shorter. So but it is absolutely a pleasure to be here with you this morning. I love budgeting. It's not in the process. It seems to be difficult, but it's fun finding the pieces and matching them up. And I get an opportunity to present the fun part of the budget, which is our capital projects. And I want to echo what city manager said about the importance of the team. And my team has been phenomenal through this. A lot of the capital projects that we tackle here in the city are public works related. But it really takes the finance department and all the department heads and their teams to be able to build this and present it. And a lot of work goes into it. And most of the time, that work starts in September, and here we are in April and culminating in June with an approved budget. So it is really extensive in getting to these numbers. So if I can have the next slide, please. So my agenda for my presentation looks like this. We're going to do just a recap really quickly of our 24 fiscal year projects. And then I'm going to tag team with Jill and she's.
I apologize. Ron, I apologize.
You're fine.
Steve in the back is, it looks like he, I can see him on the phone trying to figure a few things out, but we don't have the screens in front of council right now.
Okay.
Stretch our necks here for a little bit until we get those screens up.
Okay. Yeah. Follow Mike Wolf's advice.
If you kindly tilt your head to the side, you'll clearly see.
You may be asleep, but.
Yeah, Ms. Foggan, we have written ones in front of us, so.
Yeah, I'll just be following that presentation.
Okay, until we get, thank you.
And so we're going to cover 24 budget fiscal year projects. Then I'm tag teaming with Jill. She's going to go over the available funding and funding sources. And then the next or last part of my presentation will be what our projects look like for '25 and then '25 through '29. As city manager indicated, this is kind of crystal ball work in trying to figure out timing wise. I don't think that you'll see a lot of, you'll be familiar with a lot of the projects that are in the five-year capital plan, maybe movement within years. But I don't think you'll see a lot of surprises as far as the CIP goes, Jill. So I'm going to cover this kind of by division so that it makes a little sense as we go through it. So the first part is airport. I would say that the two projects that were really important in the airport this year were the runway strengthening and overlay. And then, of course, our effort to do a safety area for the planes and the runway itself. And this activity actually extended, if we do proper maintenance on the runway, we will basically extend the life of the runway by 30 years. So really, really important work we did out at the airport this year on our drainage. You just approved Tuesday night, design work for drainage. And we'll be, we receive property tax distribution from the county every year. And we did a lot of work this year with our drainage funds. We tackled the town wash and the half a pie wash six. And those have been absolutely great projects in our drainage effort. Obviously, drainage being providing safety to our citizens and property that the monsoons affect. Next slide, please. City manager already mentioned our Site Six boat ramp reconstruction, great project along with the island path repave. One of the most used recreation areas that we have in the city. We're also in the process this year of tackling what we call Phase One of the Police Department facility, and that's part of the jail system. And we couldn't talk about this project without a big thank you to Senator Kelly for helping us get approximately 1.8 million towards this very important project for us. And just yesterday, we had a kickoff meeting on our pavement, our city core paving project that is going to do overlay. And it will also do some waterline replacement in our city core. So pretty excited about being able to get that started. Next slide. I cannot talk about any of these projects without talking about our flow equalization basin. That has been a five-year project, over $5 million. That project completed in this fiscal year. And it is a great project out on the island for the island treatment plant, and we're really happy to have that up and running. The other really important piece, we just recently talked about at city council as well, is our Vedos well. Just being able to really professionally and efficiently take care of our effluent while recharging our aquifers is really a great project. And so those, as city manager said, just kicked off and should be well underway by before the end of the fiscal year. Next slide. Another big push that we've been making along with the effort to replace our pavement is waterline replacement. And so we've been lucky to be granted money to do our mainline replacement, something that we always want to try to stay on top of as much as we possibly can. And so you'll see waterline replacement talked about in this presentation several different times as a, is a pretty big priority for our sustainability of our system and frankly, for protection of our road infrastructure as well. So that's really our 24 capital improvements. We've been really busy. We continue to be busy as we race towards the end of the fiscal year. Some of these projects are wrapping up and some will be carried over and continue work next year. But unless there's any questions, Mayor, turn the time over to Jill to cover how we basically pay or what capital funding looks like.
Mr. Foggan.
Thank you, Ron. Good morning, council, Mayor. In starting the discussion about the available funding within the five-year plan, it's balanced and funded, as Mr. Knutson indicated. The only area where we are suggesting more revenue be transferred is into the HERF fund because currently, the state only provides enough funding really to cover our operating costs. So for funding, a funding stream that we dedicate to the CIP fund, the general fund portion is dedicate, we have a one, I don't want to say one time. We use the amount for construction sales tax as our basis for what we transfer from the general fund into the HERF fund or into the CIP fund. And that's about $3 million a year. So tying that to construction sales tax also means that a slowdown in construction activity or the number of permits could reduce the amount of revenue available to transfer to CIP. So those would be related. Again, for FY '25, we will be proposing that 20% of the general fund's vehicle license tax, which is about $1 million, is another dedicated funding stream for the CIP HERF projects. Total for the five years for all funds is about $331 million for this five-year CIP. As you recall, utility rate increases were approved by council effective November 1st of 2023. So we will be monitoring those revenues very closely to see if they track to what we projected during the utility rate study. We don't know how much of the, if there could be changes in behavior of water use that could affect those revenues. We don't know that level of change yet. We included some level of change for conservation, but we don't know what the actual result will be based upon what people's behaviors are. As Mr. Knutson mentioned, we are not proposing any debt issuance to accomplish this five-year CIP plan. On the Highway User Revenue Fund, referred to as HERF, due to the insufficient revenues in HERF, staff is recommending another transfer of $5 million from the unencumbered general fund balance to the HERF. So that is included in the initial numbers that we're preparing for the May meeting, and it's included in the CIP plan. This is just a graph to indicate where the money in the CIP is spent, on what types of projects. So it's broken down by the type of city service. More than half, you will see, is used to fund the water and the wastewater projects. Drainage projects are improvements to our washes and drains, as Mr. Foggan indicated. And that is funded through flood control district dollars that we pay through our property taxes. And that's between $2.5 and $3 million each year. Grant funding is a large portion, mostly due to the proposed airport grants and other potential grant funding. And then again, on the streets and HERF side, that is a relatively smaller piece of the pie because of the level of funding received from the state being sufficient only for those ongoing expenses and projects in the operating budget. This is a representation of the five-year CIP by funding source. So this gives you a good picture of how much of the CIP projects are funded by grants. So of that $331 million, 219 million of that is grant funding or anticipated grant funding. This also includes the funding for the second bridge that we receive from the state. And you'll see that in this five-year CIP as well, and you'll see the funding source there. So now I'll turn it back over to Ron to take a closer look at the actual FY '25 through '29 CIP.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor, council, the next section of my presentation is really just to cover what we're planning for capital improvements for fiscal year '25. In the presentation, you can see that these, the names of some of these projects show up multiple times because they cross fiscal years. Some of that is design work. Some of it's design work and a little bit of construction, construction. And so don't be alarmed. I know that you'll see some of these names of projects several times, but it's just because they flow across fiscal years. And the only way to really truly show you a five-year capital plan is to show you how that flow is across time. So for '25, our projects add up to just over $60 million. So in '24, they added up to just over $50 million. So we're as busy as we've been this year. We continue to be as busy, if not busier, in the upcoming year for capital projects. So for '25, just speaking in the same order, basically, as I did through '24, covering the airport. The next pieces of the puzzle for the airport will really be the lighting portions of the runway. So there's two projects proposed for the airport on that, and that was the end light runway lights and the distance remaining signs at the airport. And then we continue our effort in our wash maintenance or our wash improvements. I'll just call it strengthening our washes, slope improvements, drops to make those washes more dependable and less likely to impact properties around them. So we will be tackling through design and/or construction, the Kaowa Train Three, the Havasupi Wash Six, and Queens Bay washes. Excellent. Or for kind of our, what we would consider to be a portion of our general fund capital improvements, we continue, we've been looking for ways to do a fuel facility. It's been out for bid a few times and finally settled on a way to actually do a fuel facility with our team tackling it and using subcontractors to do that. So we hope to see that one complete in 2025. Couldn't go past the slide without mentioning Fire Station Number Seven. We, as city manager mentioned, we've, it looks like we've identified an architect to start doing design work on that. So the design work on Station Seven will begin. And if that goes well, there is possibility that we will actually be able to start construction. We're hoping to start construction on Fire Station Number Seven this upcoming fiscal year. And the PD Phase Two continued to make improvements to kind of an older building with the need for HVAC as well as a roof, a new roof on the building and other what I would consider essential structure improvements there. Also on this list is the London Bridge deck repair. The London Bridge needs basically a mill and fill of the asphalt that sits over the superstructure. That needs to happen. And then the big one that everybody's been talking about, that we've been involved with is the start of our second bridge, and we hope to be in design early in fiscal year 2025 in an effort to get that project done. And just as a reminder, the acknowledgement to the state and our local representatives for being able to give Lake Havasu $35.5 million towards this project. Next slide. So, sorry.
Sorry, Ron. You'll see me interrupt a couple of times.
Oh, you're good. You're good. You're good.
If you go back to the previous slide, Jill, could you? Just want to make mention that on that, the top line is the Downtown Catalyst project. So we identified $1.8 million that remain, approximately $1.8 million that remain in the ABC competition funds, as well as the million-dollar grant that we received from State Parks, Arizona State Parks. What's not included in that line is just short of $900,000 that is identified for that project as well that you don't see in the CIP. So later on, if you look at that project and look at the budget for it, you'll have to add that, you know, 900,000 to the 1.8. So the project budget for the Downtown Catalyst, as approved by council to date, is the 2.7. And then also mentioned, talking about that project, we also have about $800,000 from WIFA, a WIFA grant that would help us with some water efficiencies that would be tied to that project as well, too. So I want to make mention of that just because we'll be potentially coming to council here shortly with a plan for possible next steps for council consideration.
Thank you for that. So our 2025 fiscal year CIP project continues to be true to the council's desire to see improvements to our street infrastructure. City Core will wrap up in 2025. There'll be some design work for Jamaica. And then our big project for 2025 on streets is to tackle a section of Lake Havasu Avenue and Mesquite. And a portion, those also include water mainline replacement that I have, that I plan or that you will see in an upcoming slide. Another really important project, it's small on the list, but our South Intake Influent Screen, that work will actually be important as we continue to work on our permit to basically send effluent directly into the lake. If ADQ permit is granted, this will be an important first step in being able to take that project on. So just wanted to point that out. And then, you know, when you talk about sewer, generally, there's nothing really super sexy about any of the projects. They're just really super important. But I do want to point out that our Park Avenue Lift Station renovation is a super important project in that it is going to be an upsizing of that due to kind of rapid growth in that part of the city that it serves. And so that is, moving forward, one of the more important projects that we're going to tackle for the Sewer Department in 2025. Next slide. Another really important sewer project that I wanted to point out is our North End wastewater system expansion. The North End has some forced main lines that are causing us quite a bit of trouble. This project will help take care of those as well as be able to build up the system to accommodate both residential and commercial growth in the north end of the community. The horizontal collector well redevelopment, this was a project that started in fiscal year '24. We put it out for bid, didn't receive bids. We've been working on this project continuously to get it back to a rebid status. We will have that back out on the street for bid. And we are planning on having this project start at the end of October outside of our high-demand area for water. And then finally, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, our effort to do mainline water replacement continues to be a really important project. And it will be. You'll see that throughout the five-year CIP, that the numbers are big. And really, maybe not as big as they should be, but it's what the rate increase is allowing us to do. And being able to stay on top of these mainline replacements are extremely important to delivering water to our customers. So that's what I have for water and sewer. And that's really, kind of in a nutshell, what the projects are looking like for '25. So now I'd like to kind of step into what the three years or four years after '25 will be looking like. So the big project for the next five years, other than the ones that I just covered, the big one's going to be apron improvements at the terminal. And along, just along the entire length of the airport, the apron replacement, the PCI, the pavement condition index for those areas are really, really low. And those need to be rehabbed and made new again. Wonderful thing about the airport is that most of the money that goes towards these projects are federally funded at over 90% or a combination of federal and state funding. And generally, we're asked to provide a very small percentage, which is very helpful for being able to tackle these very expensive projects at the airport. Next slide. And this just carries, the airport's got a number. I didn't have anything really to cover on this one, other than just lots of work to do at the airport. Our next slide is our drainage projects. We continue to use the funding that's provided for drainage through the entire five-year CIP tackling these projects. I would say, I have to say, being new. I would say, I have to say, being new to the organization, that Havasu has done a phenomenal job with the distribution of of drainage funds that they've gotten. I mean, the projects are really impressive. If you haven't seen and gone out and looked at some of the work that's been done, it it's really, we've got a network of washes that are really to be proud of. So we can continue that tradition over the next five years. In the general fund, government projects, City Manager has already covered the Catalyst Park. There is also, I wanted to point out, the courthouse covered parking. Again, that is coming out of funds that are not part of city funds. It is, my understanding is that this is being covered out of the court funds that are distributed as courts need them to do repairs or improvements. And I believe they've been successful in being granted that. So a nice addition to a beautiful new courthouse with with some covered parking. That means a lot here in the summertime, so. And then, next slide, please. So for the parks, the the project that that I wanted to highlight, and this is the outdoor pool, is a companion facility to our Aquatic Center. This facility will be, as I understand it, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, twenty five meter pool with six lanes. Is that correct? Yards, okay, we don't, we don't speak meters, okay, twenty five yards. Six, six lanes. And then I think the other one that I just point out quickly is the Site Six Fishing Dock in an effort to kind of finalize improvements in this area, making improvements to that facility. And it heavily used as well and well deserving of of those additional funds.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Foggan. So what you'll see in there is like we put in shoreline improvements. And the reason for that is as we were going through the the project for Site Six and the ramp at Site Six, we had to change gears a little bit in terms of the permitting. And our original plan during the scope for the scope of the project was we're going to put in a coffer dam or kind of dam up the area and then be able to construct the the ramp from that 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 position. But they 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 came back and said, nope, we don't, we're not going to allow that that activity to take place. So the team did a great job in kind of switching gears and coming up with a new plan, which turned out phenomenal. We had, we poured the the ramp on land and then pushed it in with three, three bulldozers, DC tens or eights.
Eights.
It's that pushed that ramp into the into into the water. There was a little bit of a, there was an increased cost associated with that. So we reached out to State Parks and asked for some additional slip funds to help pay for that balance, do our due diligence to try to save general fund dollars wherever we can. And that was one example of that. In the meantime, Ron and his team, Bill Young and others, didn't stop. And they were looking at doing some changes with with that project that helped save those funds otherwise. So we're still going to see a really great project and we we are seeing a really great project. But in the meantime, we had requested five hundred thousand dollars for that that project. So rather than us calling and saying, hey, never mind, we've identified that if we receive those funds, additional slip funds that we'd use it for what slip is, what is intended for, which is, you know, shoreline improvements or something along associated with the the water. So that's why you see a line item that with lot, not a lot of detail, that just says shoreline improvements. But we're not going to turn away five hundred thousand dollars in slip funds if we receive them, so.
Good, excellent point. All right, find my spot here. Again, I I had mentioned our investment in our public safety infrastructure fiscal year 25 and 26. We will have Fire Station Seven complete. That will be a wonderful addition to our our fire service coverage. And also, when you think about Phase One and Phase Two of the police facility, it doesn't sound like a lot until you add it up and put it on the page. And then 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 you're looking at seven point three million. And and really, that is much needed for a facility that's that's kind of aging out and needs some new life in it, especially the the kind of the bones. So that's what we're doing for public safety in the next couple of years. Our street projects, again, we we heard the message from the council, which is take care of our streets, make the improvements that are needed. You can see that we are doing that through all five of the next five years of our efforts to basically tackle very high traveled streets with low pavement condition index scores, all of all of them deserving and needing overlays and the attention to make sure they continue to be travelable for the our commercial and residential uses. In the wastewater, again, a lot of projects, a lot of important projects. I just want to continue to highlight the Vados Well Design and Expansion as an extremely important project on our north end and the ability to take care of our affluent and do the right thing by recharging our or keeping our aquifers recharged. And so it is, it has been an ongoing or has been a priority and it continues to be a priority for the Sewer Department or Division in in the north end of the city. We are, we have what I'm, no one's referred to this, so I'm I'm going to give it Phase Two of of the project that I covered earlier, which was our five year, five million dollar project, the Island Treatment Plant Headwork Improvement. This project is basically a revamp of our headwork in an effort to better accommodate our the work that was done on our flow equalization basin as well as much needed replacement of of screening. It's a big project, it's really important. And if we want to get the most out of this plant and our flow equalization basin, this is Phase Two of of completing what will make our that plant really efficient, effective and last well into the future is what, of course, what we're trying to do as well. We're also really working on dealing with affluent on this in this part of the city as well and basically making sure that our 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 affluent ponds are operating correctly, not leaking, which is kind of a requirement that ADQ expects us to follow. And so you'll see new linings for our ponds are needed well into the future. But blink and it'll be here, so. Next slide. Our water projects, again, we have a lot of water projects. City Manager already covered the first one, which is a new water plant. If we were to receive the federal federal funding that we've requested, I think the number was two point or twenty two hundred and eighty million, two hundred and ninety million dollars in an effort to be realistic. We've bumped that 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 number down and we actually could build a new water treatment plant at least Phase One of that for a hundred and fifty two million. Fingers crossed, it it may take more than just fingers crossed. But the the really the important, the important project on here continues to be our water main replacement program. It's a big number, as you can see, and it and and we, in an effort, those, obviously, when those lines go bad, bad things really happen. And that's property damage, that's street damage. And we're really, over the next five years, going to try to tackle the worst parts of our system and make sure that they're that they're hardened moving forward. And I I I'm really excited about having some extra money to put towards this. The other one that we've talked on and off with the council about, I know that City Manager's been anxious to get this underway, and that is smart meter installation. Making our system a smart system is critical for water, saving water as well as just not having property damage occur. And the smart meter installation will will absolutely let us accomplish that. And then the last slide is the last of our water. And again, tanks and boosters, not not something that really people think much about. But they are absolutely critical to our water system and our delivery to our our businesses and our citizens. And so every year, we're we're tackling really important projects that make sure that that we can continue to do that. And I'm happy to report that that is the end of me having to talk to you. Mayor, questions or whatever I can do for you?
Excellent, yeah, thank you, Mr. Foggan. So a great summary of of the amazing projects we're currently under in the fifty million dollar range. A nice summary of proposed for fiscal year 25 and then an overall look at the entire five year CIP. We also have a supplemental book that details out all of those pieces of information. Open up at this time to council for any questions, comments, or discussion on any of the items that you may have seen or or have comments on. Councilmember Campbell?
Just giving everybody else a chance. Well, thank you, everybody, for this. This is really, really impressive and it's a lot of work. And I'm extremely excited for our city and our citizens that, number one, it's debt free and the funding will be available. And thank you to our grant writers. And with that being said, we are starting to see for the first time in history what grant writing can do for us. The current federal government is absolutely encouraging us to go ask for our tax dollars back through a grant process for most of you that aren't aware. With that being said, the Roads Smart Fund has just been approved by our governor as well, which is for improvement of new roads and infrastructure. It, too, can have pretty heavy grant funding if we're prepared. So right now, in this, I don't see a lot. I love all the roads, our roads definitely need it. I've been preaching that from day one. But what I'd like to do is really start to have a conversation, kind of like what we put, we put a contingency amount for that water treatment plant of a hundred and fifty million dollars, give or take what, you know, there's a lot of money there in grant funding. What I'd like to see is for us to really start to take initiative and look into this smart fund grant money that is definitely available to us if we're prepared and ready to go. We are needing a new MPO, of course, so we're going to need to have that in place, but also project ready sources. And I have spoke with Supervisor Johnson in regards to the old official bypass we used to talk about. And we dusted off some old flans and looked at it. I was also up the foothills yesterday, looking at the three possible options of making that traffic flow a little bit better. So I think you hear what, I I know you understand and hear what I'm trying to say here, that I would really like us to see work on some expansion in the next five years, including project ready, including maybe some contingency funds so that we can match some sort of the smart funding if we need to, no different than FAA.
Mayor, council, I I would just say that that we echo that from the public work side. And I totally agree with you in being strategic. We are happy to work with our grant folks who we 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 work with really well. And we will be definitely looking at having shovel ready projects wherever and whenever we possibly can. We, as grants pop up, and that's definitely something that we see happen from time to time. All of a sudden, there's a federal program nobody knew coming and you want to be ready for those. And if the state wants to give us more money, we want to be ready for it.
Yes, and thank you. And then I'm going to jump on over to the Downtown Catalyst.
I just want to, I have a comment on your comments as well. So when it comes to streets, just so the the council understands, and and if I'm not correct, Mr. Kooten, maybe you can correct me. But when what we have in front of us with our capital improvement plan is is our map, our guideline. So when grant funding comes available, like the smart funding, the first place that we're going to go for shovel ready, if that's the word we want to use, will be our capital improvement plan. From there, then, we'll offset those dollars with those grant dollars, which then would free up potentially that funding source as identified in this plan for a different project or a carry forward of that money into an investment into the next year. So, for example, if the smart funding that Governor Hobbs signed into law this week comes into play and we're able to use that money for the London Bridge Deck Repairs, for example. The London Bridge Deck Repair, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside in the capital improvement plan. Should that be adopted by this council, we would use that grant funding, which would then free up three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Streets Fund that we can use on a different project or carry forward into a bigger street project. And that that is, that's just one example of many of the different funding sources of grants come in to place that we would use those those dollars. There's also some of the matches that you're talking about are are put into here into consideration already. But I just want to make sure we all understood from a full CIP plan that that is is how that would be identified. Is we would go here, we'd say, hey, this is the project, we're going to use the grant for this money and free up those sources for additional projects. Is that?
I I totally agree with what you're saying, and we've done this in the past. What will you intended to do it with the appropriation bill last time? What I'm asking for the future is more new, improved road systems. Everything I see right here only has to do with pavement preservation, water replacement. And when I went through the grant requests on the smart funding, I saw that they were looking to expansions. That's the word I'm looking for, bigger expansion projects. And I don't think as a city, we have, I've had a lot of discussions about expansions because I'm in the business. But as the city portion, I don't see any expansion of roads and a continuation of a road system somewhere. Maybe in a widening of a road system, I'm seeing a replacement or a repair of existing. That's that's my direction that I meant to go.
Okay, yeah, no, it's great clarification. Okay, Mr. Kooten, I get that kind of summary right on how we would do that for shovel ready, if that's the term we're using.
Sure, Mayor and Council, Councilmember Campbell as well, the, yeah, two things here. One is just the, when we, a grant opportunity comes in, typically, that's our process, right? So that, hey, we got a grant opportunity, what project should we apply for? And my reaction every time is going to be, well, what's in the CIP? Because those projects have been, gone through the council process and and through the public process. We know that those are projects that were that were, we want to fund and complete, right? And so that's important. And as you indicated, Mayor, then that does free up dollars if we're awarded grant dollars for her for general fund projects, and that frees up those those funds to identify another project moving moving forward. So that's a, that's a very important. The other aspect of this, too, is that, yes, we have a very, very good budget team. And we've thought about scenario A, B, C, and I think we get to L or M. So if if grants come in, we are poised and ready for us to take advantage of of those opportunities. So we we identify projects and we put possible grant funding, link those to possible grant funds. In addition to that, we also have a allocation for grants that we don't know that might come out, that we've identified allocations for that as well, too. So we don't know what grant opportunities might come up. We know what the what the routine is and we know what happens each and every year or through different cycles. But we also want to be prepared beyond that for grants that we didn't expect to 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 pop up. And so we have an allocation for that as well. It's important for the allocation, but but we also have to work with the expenditure limitation. So whatever total number the the council approves for the grant, for, I mean, excuse me, for the budget, we cannot exceed that spending limitation. So it's, we we want to make sure that we have all of those scenarios built within the budget. We're able to to utilize grant funds when they when they come in and take advantage of opportunities and employs ourselves to minimize as much of an impact as we can through the taxpayers and the general fund and and otherwise.
Do you have any follow up, Councilmember Campbell, or do you want to shift over to Downtown Catalyst?
Well, I I still, I appreciated your explanation, Mr. Kooten, I did. But nowhere did I hear about the expansion projects or expanding in new road systems and engineering's with an overlay of plan to deal with our growth in the near future. to deal with our growth in the near future, because I'm a planner, so I know none of this is going to happen right away. But if we have smart funding that is absolutely looking at expansion, that's design, that's that's engineering, that's a lot of civil engineering that could be really important for us in the next five or 10 years on how we deal with some of the traffic flows that we have in Lake Havasu. Other than obviously, I would never want to take a dollar away from all the pavement preservation and the water replacement lines that we so desperately need. So that's the part that I'm trying.
I think your point was well made. Yeah, I think, yeah, so as the smart grant, literally, the governor just signed it this week. So as we look at that, I mean, I think expansion would be something that was important to all of council and and staff is is listening. And as those opportunities come available, we'll we'll certainly consider them on the council and you'll start to see the the CIP shape around that. So yeah, absolutely.
That's all I'm asking for. I didn't expect it probably to be here, other than if we need some contingency funding. But I understand what you already said. What you said is that money is already there and they're already project ready. So if we get grant money, we already have a contingency plan there that I get for pavement preservation. But I don't see anything for expansion.
Or potentially expansion as well. I mean, so once those dollars are freed up and should that grant allow the way for expansion, then we use those dollars for that. But no, point well taken. So I appreciate you bringing that forward. Did you want to pivot to, I think you had mentioned downtown catalyst? Okay.
Yes, I do. The downtown catalyst project is something that was in the Vision Vision project many years ago, which was really positive was because it was supposed to be a private public partnership. And it was going to bring a positive energy and good stuff to downtown. As the planning has continued, I see a very big park. I have spoke with every a park that is going to need maintenance. The park that is going to definitely come into our maintenance budget for parks. What I have a problem with right now is, and I've told a few people that I took my grandsons to Sarah Park for the first time in like 30 years, because my kids all went to Sarah Park. And that park has not improved in 30 years, not one post, not anything hasn't improved in that park. And then I went to go put my bags down, the kids, the way the kids were even set up all the T balls, which a lot of people play our softball and baseball. I mean, they use our fields. This place is packed on every weekend, twice a week. You know, I've got grandkids going everywhere. We're all trying to get them there. So I all of a sudden, after 30 years, get to see these parks that I used to sit at 30 years ago with my kids when they're nine, 10, 11, 12. And I'm looking around going, oh, my gosh, this park has not improved one bit, maybe some paint, maybe that's it, some basic maintenance. Not even a dugout for the smaller kids, which the parents all had to bring these things to help them. I went to put my blanket down on the ground. They're like, pick up the blanket, pick up the blanket. There's ants everywhere. I'm like, what? And then one lady said, my son, who was a pitcher, she told me about his legs just getting all bit up from ants. No offense to the park director, not his fault. I feel that we just don't, we don't have enough funding to maintain the current, what is it, 17 parks? How many parks do we have? Isn't it parks director? How many? 17 parks. And as I go down to Rotary Park, and I mentioned this three years ago, watching it was Arizona's most beautiful park. And I'm seeing how much maintenance it needs, how much maintenance went into Wheeler Park. So I have a really hard time building another park if we can't maintain the parks that we have. Then I went out and spoke with all the con, so many business owners up and down that street, parking issues, parking issues. They're all like, we don't want the park downtown without parking. So the downtown catalyst, I really wish that we would dust that off a little bit, kind of like the bypass around foothills and have another conversation. I did speak with developers, I did speak with business owners, a lot of them. And they said, said a parking garage with the event center like I spoke about three years ago, where we parcel off the front of McCullough, not the back of McCullough to a business investor where we come in with a public private partnership to put a downtown parking garage is the direction I'm hearing. So to have this here, if we're just trying to put some bathrooms up to make it work, you know, and I got numbers, I haven't yet to see the bids, but I have numbers and that people have told me rumors that your bids were like at 6.5 to do what you wanted to do with no parking. So I know that some parking garages recently are being built at about 7 million. So I really wish we'd bring that conversation back and really dust it off and really see what, if this is really what we still want to do is a very, very expensive downtown park with no parking. Okay, I said my piece again.
All right, are there any additional comments? I mean, downtown catalyst is coming forward, so it'll be in front of council for consideration. I I mean, I wouldn't say that it's very dusty because it's been going through a public process for the last 18 months with public input. But you know, maybe the one speck of dust that might have got on it in the last two weeks before it comes before us can be dusted off and we can talk about that there. Again, from a planning perspective, this is a planning document for the budget. So we have to have all of the alternatives there when council and the community come together to to talk about any of the projects. We we have to have a pathway to do that. If there's not budgeted, we can't do it at all, whether it's a pivot from from one of the directions in here or it's as planned today. But we have to plan for all different scenarios and that's what this document does. But I appreciate your comments.
Great clarification. I guess what I was hoping for is just for us to table it. But if you're saying, don't table it, let's leave it there and then let's have this conversation another date, that's fine. But I was able to speak my piece again.
Perfect. And then when it comes to maintenance of the the parks, that we'll talk about that in our next budget hearing during the operating budget component. Other questions, yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, can we have somebody give us a little bit of background on the outdoor pool project? And I guess I have a little bit of concerns, the project, I'm I'm fine with it, but I'd just like to hear a little background how we got here because it's the first time we've seen this. On what the maintenance and staffing will look like down there, because we already have a struggle with the staffing in the in that area. So I just want to know what that looks like.
Sure, yeah, I'll I'll start off and then Mr. Kooten, maybe you can add in. His first came to me actually through a coffee with the mayor and city manager. We had pool users and mostly the swim team folks, the a few parents came forward, started the conversation. We then introduced them to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. There was a discussion at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for for what that would look like and future expansion. I guess the the pool is very, very difficult. There's very limited time for general lap swim at our current pool. And then we have the high school team or the high school and the stingrays, or there's a couple of them that are competing for it. I also understand temperatures of pools are are different for different users on how they want it. But that's kind of the the part I know of how we're carrying this forward. This project obviously is still to be vetted. It's, if I recall, it's in year two of the CIP plan. But Mr. Kooten, I'll turn over to you for from a staff perspective, where that may have came from and maybe some of the operational questions.
Certainly, you know, every time we we talk about the CIP, we always make mention that we want that these are one time funds, right? But there will be impacts with with projects that 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 are here, including the construction of the second pool that have impacts on ongoing, excuse me, on on ongoing budgets. So the good news is that we're that there is the space available that allows us to to look at the existing footprint of the aquatic center. So right outside the outdoor space of the aquatic center, there's a splash pad, a grass area. That's located, some benches are located in that area. That's the the proposed site, if that's the direction that we choose to go and go with, be identified for the the second pool. We hear a lot when it comes from the swim team, from lap swims, from the aerobics classes and and similar activities that are out there that that, you know, there's there's a need for that for that space there. That also then opens it up for the recreational aspects for the for the kiddos and and others that enjoy the the existing area. So apologize because I am communicating with with Mike here a little bit too, but.
If I may, I actually I overlooked Councilmember Lane, who is our Parks and Rec Advisory Board member. So maybe Councilmember Lane, if you want to share some perspective and then back to Mr. Kooten.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, this came to us at a few Parks and Rec's Advisory Board meetings where the room was packed with parents. We have two swim teams here in Lake Havasu that use the aquatic center. One is at the high school swim team and the other is the private, the stingrays. And the pool that we have is not really built for swim meets, it's a play pool. But it is utilized for that purpose. And when there are meets, other people cannot use the pool. So the parents and the swim teams and came to us and said, we really, really need a second pool. So when we discussed this, it's like, where's the best place to put a pool? Is it at one of the schools like the high school where the high school swim team would would meet? When we talk about the aquatic center, the infrastructure is already there, the the facilities, the locker rooms for the swim meets for the other people. So the construction costs would be less by putting it at that location. It is something that is desperately needed. What I would like to see is partnership with the school district, because this would be the high school swim team location as well. So that they can help us with the construction costs and then they would use it for their swim meets. When there the swim teams are not using it, it then opens the facility up to the rest of the public. So that the public can use it for swimming the weekends. We have aerobics classes, that cuts down on what other people can use. Well, if we have two pools, the one indoor and the one outdoor, we can hold the swim meets and everybody else can also use that facility. So this is just coming into the CIP. It's a couple of years out, but we're identifying some funds because that's what the public is asking for.
Yeah, Mr. Lane. And Councilmember Lynn, does that answer your question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. That's what I was kind of looking at, what that kind of partnership makes if we're going to build a pool and and I support our swim teams and all that. But if we're building it just for that, then I'd like to see what that partnership. Could I ask Mr. Keane to tell me what he would think that staff would look like for in that area?
Good morning. By putting it on the same site, it actually makes it a lot more convenient. We're actually would only have to add maybe one or two additional lifeguards at a time when that pool was open because we have the core group inside as well that can rotate through. So by putting it there on site really limits the amount of additional staff we would need. The cashier staff is already there, where if you put it on an external site, you would need all of that and the management support.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Keane. Are there other comments or questions from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
I'm going to switch gears for a second.
Please.
Um, so and then just a clarification, Ron. I know a few years ago, we did some of the tours around to the water treatment centers and and kind of a, I can't remember what they called. And I know Councilmember Lane and I were together on one of the tours. And we toured the lab and I see here on page 23, it says new laboratory. Is that a new laboratory to replace the one that's on Mulberry or is that something different?
Mayor, Council, it is to replace the one that is at Mulberry that frankly is in desperate need of being replaced.
Desperate need like three or four years ago when I was there. That's why I'm like, are we finally going to do that? It's exciting.
Yes, we are.
Okay, well, wonderful, because I know when we toured that, I think we had some major eye opening experiences out there that day. So just that's just one in clarification. It doesn't really give any details there. So thank you.
Councilmember Coke?
Mr. Mayor, can I spin off?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I remember talking about this new lab when we were doing the 2020 vision also. So I, if I remember correctly, there's still some money left in the environment, environmental learning center. Could there be a possibility to move that money over into this area?
Potentially, yes.
Because that's still there, correct? I think it's a little bit under 200.
It's a little under 100.
100, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just talking about the pool before, but I do want to make some comments. People hear me talk a lot about deferred maintenance and the issues we've had with deferred maintenance over the years. The thing I like about this capital improvement project is you're taking care of a lot of the deferred maintenance in our facilities. You're also taking care of deferred maintenance on our roads, taking care of the deferred maintenance on our water system, taking care of the deferred maintenance on our wastewater system. You look at the dollar amounts that are being spent. It's absolutely phenomenal, the amount of money that that we're spending and we're not borrowing any money and we're not raising taxes. We're paying cash for this stuff and taking care of these issues that by no one's fault, when the economy took a hit. Of course, there was a lot of deferred maintenance because we had to balance the budget and that's what we did. But you've also balanced that with the some of these new projects, Fire Station 7, that's a huge new project. The swimming pool that we we talked about just a moment ago, that's a huge new project. And so balancing these, the deferred maintenance with this new project, the new projects, I think is is outstanding. So I really appreciate the fact that you guys have worked so hard on this budget again. This is going to be my last budget as as an elected official and and as a taxpayer here in Lake Havasu City as well. I appreciate the fact that we have not raised taxes and that we have not borrowed money and and we're moving forward and making and continuing to make this city a wonderful place. We talked about flood control today. We talked about it at the council meeting the other day. Our departments put in a lot of time and effort into these flood control projects that have been identified. We can all remember during heavy monsoon season, you know, hearing of cars getting washed away and people drowning and bad things happening. And those don't happen anymore because we're using our flood control dollars wisely. I made a a comment the other day about how all of our taxpayers contribute to this. And they contribute on their property taxes to flood control dollars. The bad part about contributing it through the the property taxes is it goes back to the county because the county collects property taxes. And then in their infinite wisdom, they decide how much of that they want to give back to us. And they don't give us back 100% of what our people pay. They keep a portion for their projects that are in the county areas. I'd like to see it all come back here. I don't think it ever will, at least not in my lifetime. But I do appreciate the fact that the taxpayers pay into that and our staff, they have flood control dollars. They use that money on flood control projects. They have HERF dollars, they use that for highway projects. The enterprise funds for the water gets used for water, for wastewater, it gets used for wastewater. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul, which is what we see in other places in the country. We don't have those issues. So I appreciate all of your hard work and I think you guys have done a phenomenal job. And I look forward to hearing the actual budget meetings when we come to them next week. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work that goes into this. It's got to be a very happy day that we can finally, you know, get to this point and and start having these conversations. And I just want you guys to know how much I appreciate you. I I, you know, Councilman Lane talked about deferred maintenance. I just want to make sure that there are, because I've heard in the past about like water wells that we've let go and different things like that. There are no assets that the current that the city has that we're letting go at this time, right? There's, we're not deferring anything to the point where we're going to lose operability of any, anything that we have. Correct?
Mr. Kooten?
Mayor, Councilmember Moses, council, 100%. So we're actually trying to catch up with some of that deferred maintenance that's happened in in the in the past years. So you're seeing investments into our Vados wells, you're seeing investments into our water wells. You're you're seeing investments into our police facility, you're seeing in other other facilities across the way. You'll see investments with our AC units and and generators and all the things that it takes to keep our operations going as smoothly as possible. Investments into roads, water and sewer, of course, and and all the rest. So we we talk a lot about as as a team, that kind of our our measuring stick when it comes to identifying projects and and items within the budget is if 10 years from now, we can look back upon the this this timeframe and say, we made the right decision at that time to put us in a better position at that time. Then those are the the projects and 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 costs that we want to identify through this budget process. So 100% spending a little bit now to maintain it is is saves us a whole lot more money down the road to to replace it. Much across the board or whatever we're talking about.
Right. I just want to just want to make sure there's nothing, nothing that we're afraid to ask for or anything like that, that we're giving you everything you need to to take care of the stuff we have. I had a question about the vehicle license tax, the 20%, is that something new that we're doing?
No, we started doing it about two years ago, just to have that same dedicated funding source.
What did we do with it before?
It just stayed in the general fund.
Okay, so we're going to take 20% of it and put it towards our road program along with HERF and then other general funds that we're that we're adding to it as well.
Correct.
All right, thank you. If you'll bear with me, let me get to my other notes here. Nowhere, nowhere in there have I seen the addition of fields. And and I know we're, I I know we can, we can have, you know, further talks with this. I I would really like to see somewhere sometime to to have a kind of a plan um to uh the addition of fields. Uh both the softball, baseball, soccer fields are all super taxed as far as the the kiddos are concerned. I mean, um I think the situation you were talking about, they're not even really on a field. But it would it's just a spot in the grass where nobody can is, right? Um I I would really like to see some addition of these. I know this is a a big ask and we need to start uh that what there's gonna be a lot of planning that goes into it, but I'd like to see some planning going now. Um and then we talked a lot about street projects, Ron, um and all of those are some of our big name core streets. At what point do we address any of our interior streets?
Mayor, council, vice mayor, I I would say that we are addressing um what we we would call residential streets or minor minor collector streets through our both crack seal, fog seal and um maybe lesser maintenance items. We have the chip seal program that you just approved. Those are being that chip seal program is being that's being heavily used on those streets that you just referenced. Uh as we as we move forward, once uh our our main arterial collector streets are taken care of. Uh when we look at the P C I uh of our streets, those maybe those lesser streets are our next focus.
Okay.
In in moving forward, the community's been, I would say, really successful in our chip seal program. Um but at some point, you would expect um to get less and less back out of that kind of process. And um as we get through the next couple of years of these of these bigger projects. That's probably a time where we can focus attention more on minor arterial or collector streets.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson.
Mayor, Councilmember Moses, uh council, um within the the bounded book that you have in front of you, if you flip to that that second page that's in there, it's uh this is the the cheat sheet or all the information contained in terms of what our our projects are. Um we see by airport drainage, general government, parks, public safety. Um just the second right after the my my memo, so it's essentially page two, right there. Yep, that's so this is a this is these are very, very important pages. Um this is what I use on a daily basis or ongoing basis to to identify uh projects that that we're working on. You flip to the next page and it's the first one is streets. So um and so you have streets is is there. It identifies our five-year plan for streets. This includes the ten uh million dollar injection of uh uh unencumbered general funds that council approved in previous budget. And this also includes a a proposed additional five million dollars um injection of unencumbered general fund dollars in here. And and that's the the plan uh um with those dollars and the existing curve dollars that we get and the B L T dollars that that are coming there. So um one project in there that's that's new. Um based on if the council wants to move forward with a five million dollar um additional and 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 funds for streets and investment into our street infrastructure is the third one there, which is a Coma Boulevard. So we uh that would be start the design of fiscal year twenty-six and construction in twenty-seven, um most likely into twenty-eight. And that would be a a a Coma Boulevard. And uh um part of that too, then we're also trying to apply for different congressional uh spending that would help us. Um cuz we wanna spend money on streets, then that uh there's a domino effect. And one of those domino effects is uh sidewalks and curbs along that that area. Um and our uh sidewalks and our curbs and our intersections are in good condition, but they're not um they're not ADA compliant based on the latest direction that that we've received. All cities and and uh counties have received over the years. Um they're fine and they're fine right now. But if you touch that street and you touch that curb, then you have to bring those those curbs and the inter- and crosswalks uh and curb cuts into uh compliance. Also, you're uh if I can too, just the the also the other domino that that falls is is all the uh the um water and sewer infrastructure underneath that road. We don't wanna put a new road on old infrastructure, so um the staff's recommendation is a five billion dollars in in for roads and another two point five million dollars in uh mainline and utilities, specifically for the most part in and on the water side. So we can replace those water uh water mains and then put the asphalt, get the congressional spending that we need to do the other curbs, but that's a um but you talked about kind of like a more kinda of a a road throughout the community, one of our boulevards, our avenues. And Coma right now is the one that that sticks out the concern. Um there's there's more work to be done for sure, but that one.
Yeah, and and Coma is still a very major street. There's but uh there's lots of little streets that that have been, you know, ravaged by when we have rain events or, you know, those two days out of the year. Are really uh big years, uh big events. Um but and and thank you for touching on it too. I was gonna ask kinda what the philosophy was when it compared to tearing up our streets and how are we lucky enough to where the worst road also has the worst water main? Um you know, what is our philosophy for or how we are import, you know, what do we put importance on and how can we line that up? As best we can to where in thirty years, when the roads fail, the water main is also failing and you know what I mean? Uh can we start getting lucky like that through planning?
Mayor, council, vice mayor, I I would say that we're we're doing the best planning that we possibly can. Obviously, that doesn't always line up where if you have a failing mainline, you're just gonna have to tackle it. But we are certainly, when there are new road projects, ones we just did, the ones we're preparing to do in twenty-twenty-five. Those have all been evaluated with waterline replacement in portions or if not portions, all all the way. Um so city core, as an example, there are portions of city core that will have water mainline replacement and there's others that have new line under it. So uh we're doing our best to to marry those up. But there is moving forward on our mainline replacement. There's gonna be times where those don't match up, but we're making every effort to identify the streets and the infrastructure under them to be replaced at the same time.
Okay, great, thank you. I just hate doing things twice.
Uh uh so do we.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Moses. Uh Councilmember Dolan, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Perfect. Just wanna, you know, thank the staff for all the hard hard work on this. Um I love, like I said, that everyone has said we're we're not raising taxes. Um we're addressing some issues that, you know, things have been kicked down the road for the past few years and um, you know, definitely proud to be a part of it. Um just touching on some of the other topics people said, um you know, I still like the idea of the downtown catalyst park. Um as a simple, you know, upgrade and we use the money that was dedicated for it. I do also share those concerns if we're spending money that can be spent on other parks on that park. So I would definitely like to have that discussion. Um I definitely agree, we need um we could definitely use more fields. Um one thing I'd mentioned to um city manager in the past that maybe we could also look into is, you know, there's a lot of land out there. We can lease from the state. Um maybe we can level it and put some grass down and use the affluent water and, you know, use it with the different events, balloon fest, things like that. Um you know, the second bridge, it does resolve some of those um traffic issues that we've had, but you know, I'd like to see us um you know, like fields are definitely a a big thing. Um I'm glad to see we're looking at the pool. Um I think that's definitely a great addition and that we're incorporating it into our existing aquatic center. Um other than that, you know, definitely roads. Um roads and 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 water mains, you know, it seems like sometimes we will, if we're gonna replace the road, we have to do the water main. But you know, there's also, you know, i- if we need to replace the water mains, we, you know, we've seen that too. They Unisource will dig up the road and it'll be bad road for the next five years until the patch comes in, so um you know, I'd definitely like to see us keep an eye on who's cutting into our roads and making sure that they are replacing them as they as they do, cuz most of our, if you look at our, in my opinion, you look at our roads, it's not necessarily the roads themselves that are always bad. It's the cuts and it's the replacements and it's that all now all of a sudden, there's just a pothole there because somebody dug in for a internet line or something like that. So you know, those are the things I, you know, some of the low-hanging fruit, I hope we we continue to catch and stay on and have the companies that are cutting into the road. Um the utilities and such that they're doing their patches the way they should. So other than that, like I said, definitely great work. Um love the planning. Um you know, definitely like to see the grants like we talked about, but of course, you know, we can't we can't spend it if we didn't put it in the budget and have the discussion and have it be there as a holding place for some of those things, so. You know, great work to the staff. Thanks again.
Thank you, Councilmember Dolan. All right, before we open the public hearing, I'll just make a couple of comments. E- at the um city council level, we hear items that come before us in um in case format. So we have an issue that comes before us and we vote yes or no. And uh when that occurs, we have lots of debate and lots of discussion. Uh but today's budget budget presentation is a lot different than last year's. Last year, we had a whole lot of red. And that was uh all on the uncertainty of the rate study that we did. So I would like to to thank my colleagues on the council for um the conversation and support to implement the rate study uh for water wastewater. Uh what staff needs and the community as a whole is we need certainty. And so we gave certainty and so we now have the ability to identify uh programs of work that can be conducted because there's a revenue source that goes against that. Uh that would not have been able to occur had we not done that work to implement a new rate study. And now we have a budget in front of us without any red, without any options, that if if we don't do it, we won't have this. We we actually have a plan and certainty for for the staff. Um also going through um and identifying over the years, we've we've done um we've changed and shifted, but always on this side of certainty. So the construction sales tax has a uh identified source of revenue for our C I P planning. The the twenty percent of V L T or the vehicle license tax to give against certainty so that when we're doing budgeting, we can do long-range planning. So again, it's a it's a planned document that gives us the long range. Certainly, things are gonna shift and change as grants or the uh conditions of the economy or uh citizen needs change, but it at least gives that map or that pathway for that. Um if I had to describe um the budget in in just using one word, I would use balance. And one, it needs to be a balanced budget. We need to have enough revenues to cover the expenses, but it's also a balancing game. So there's lots of priorities that we have as a community that we would like to see happen all right now and all this year. Even if we had all of the resources to do all of those things that we had want, we don't have the ability to get those done. Uh so as we talk about each of these projects, although Mr. Fagin is the one that's giving the the update on the C I P uh specifically. It takes the entire team to do this. So it has to go through uh finance and procurement and um the city attorney's office, city manager's office, engineering, a public works, and then the department specific, just so many people. We don't have the ability to even push through should we um have an influx of resources to get all those things done, so we have to balance that. Uh so it's always a balancing act in the conversations and the inputs from council this morning. Um I I think are are really good um points that we can now start shifting the plan, the budget documents to identify field uh uh development in the future. Uh taking care of recreational opportunities into the future, uh our road networks, our uh infrastructure, water, wastewater, quality of life, public safety. I mean, all of the things are covered um on on this budget. Um and it's it's a lot of work, so you know, we spend what, an hour and a half, you know, going through it. But this is really many, many months, if not years of planning that have gone through this. Um and it's just one stage through there. So I I also applaud the staff for all of your work um on on this front. I do think that this covers um a a wide swath of the priorities of our community. Um and certainly those will shift starting in years two through five of this plan based on additional resources and and conversations, but all right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Joan De Zero, um thank you. I just had a clarification on the construction. Um that we were getting the three million that was gonna go in for revenue uh from the constructions, taxes are what's coming in. The concern, was that amount taking into consideration the current forecast for the inflation rate that's coming up with the interest rates gonna hit maybe for home loans somewhere between ten and twelve percent? Because if that's the case, I see things really slowing down, probably about the beginning of this fiscal year. Um I didn't know if that was anticipated a little bit in the number based on, I couldn't find the number for last year on that.
Yeah, great. Yeah, thank you for the question. And I'll shift it over to Ms. Olson, but yeah, that that again is just a planned document, so you know, taking a a historical average, if you will, of construction sales tax and then the V L T over the last two years. But Ms. Olson, if you'd wanna talk about this budget specifically.
Yes, it was taken into consideration. We take a look at historical trends and we also take a look at what we anticipate the market and the changes in the economy to be possibly to be, and we're pretty conservative, we have to admit. But that is what it's based on. We try to take all of that into consideration.
And thank you for being conservative cuz that that's very helpful. And would anyone else like, yeah, please, just make your way to the podium?
Yes, uh David Diaz, uh one thing to con- and consider in the future for the the fields we talked about and some good comments about baseball fields and softball fields, you know, if we do get to the point where we upgrade those things, we could get some extra revenue for the city to do when we hold tournaments. There's a lot of, we had to turn a lot of tournaments away cuz during COVID because we didn't have the fields. But if we get the fields upgraded and we could do that, we could bring some new tax dollars into the city also, something to think about.
Yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate that. Are any additional uh comments? Yes, please.
James Maniachi, um thank you for all the hard work and for your the length and breadth and depth of your analysis and looking at the figures and trying to set it up so that you can uh meet the future. Um in in as far as saying that you haven't raised taxes, if you're talking about only the tax rate, yes, you're you're correct. But every year, Arizona makes all the entities publish a uh they call it truth in taxation, where if your dollar amount increases, you have to do that. And uh I I noticed in the last one that it was very, it wasn't very much more in in for Havasu, so that's good. Thank you.
I think we'll learn a little bit more about that in our next item uh this morning. Well, yeah, what's it like to address the council on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and yeah, close the public hearing and uh turn it to Mr. Knutson for some final comments before we move to the next item.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Sorry for the interruption before we close the public hearing. Um one other thing I wanted to make mention here that's not included in the list of projects uh for the the C I P here. Um but it's something we've been talking about uh very recently is an opportunity for the the city to take a look at a S S P or state special project grant opportunity uh that would be out there. And if we if the council wants to take advantage of that opportunity, uh we'd be looking at a construction of a splash pad. A new splash pad that would be located in the uh the the concept right now would be in the like the Rotary Park um area. Um so that we could uh get as much as five hundred thousand dollars in in uh grant awards. If obviously, if if awarded, it would be a small match in terms of the connections for uh for water and sewer lines to connect that to our to our system. But the thought there is that uh um the south end of the channel, uh the old um uh remote control track that was a R C track that was there um might make a pretty good location for a future splash pad. If that's something that the the council wanted to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We uh um our friends in Bullhead City did this summer and who made quite the splash and they're pretty proud of it, so uh um but I did hear from lots of citizens myself that would uh would enjoy that and I certainly would be in favor of something with uh with grant funding um to to do that and explore it. Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, if I remember correctly, we had some issues with our splash pad up on Mesquite and with bathrooms. So would we fall into that same thing if we look at a splash pad in that area cuz there's no bathrooms down there?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, um yeah, certainly, there are state requirements as well too to have restrooms in in the uh in the close proximity. We wouldn't wanna put up uh porta potties. So if we're gonna do, we're gonna do it right with uh um with utilizing our existing facilities or the construction of of uh uh facilities that we can be proud of.
Thank you.
So actually, based on that comment, just conceptually, uh do we have a consensus of the council to if that opportunity became available? I mean, again, it's just if the funding comes available through a grant to explore that. If so, then uh Mr. Knutson and his team can adjust the budget documents going forward as we continue through this process uh to include um that opportunity again, should it arise. Looks like I'm getting nods that.
Mr. Mayor, with, I would like to see what that looks like with the bathrooms.
Again, every everything comes back before us. Yeah, this is just a budget planning document that allows us the opportunity, should it come forward again. Yeah, so it would come e- even if the opportunity comes, it would come to us and we would have to approve yes or no at that time. All the all the normal things happen, but this is just a planning document. Councilmember Lynn?
Additional amenities, move that closer, these new microphones. Additional amenities for the youth of our community? Absolutely.
Perfect. All right, uh do you have any additional comments, Mr. Knutson?
Nope, thank you for the time.
Okay, yeah, excellent. All right, so we'll move over to uh item five, which is our budget overview. Which is a presentation, discussion and potential direction to staff on the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, year-end estimates and the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget. Uh Ms. Olson? Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to, hoping my computer catches up with the screen. See what happens. Okay, again, for this portion of the budget, I too want to express my thanks to all of the staff involved in the budget process. And that includes staff from all of the departments. Everybody made a contribution and it's truly appreciated by all of us. So this short portion of today's meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about, we've already talked about the budget process a little bit and the materials that you have. You have your CIP books in front of you and then you have the presentations. We're going to look at estimated available resources for this fiscal year that we're in. And then we're going to look a little bit at FY25 and do an overview of some of the budget assumptions we've made so far. And then we'll look at discussion at the end. Again, as mentioned, the, the budget process is a long, and Angie would want me to say long, process. It does take at least 10 months. We probably spend 12 on the budget side, but it's a good 10 months participation by everyone. The budget materials, again, you have in front of you. The operating budget book will come at the May 9th work session where we'll look closely at the five-year financial projections and the revenue expenditures and more closely at the department budgets. And just a reminder, the adoption of the tentative budget, the CIP and the final budget will occur in June. And then in July, we will adopt, you will adopt the property tax rate. So for the current fiscal year, take a look at how we're doing. This is a summary that shows budget to actual comparisons by fund. So you'll see the funds listed down the left-hand side. The first fund listed is the general fund. And then across from left to right on the headings there, you'll see that we first compare budgeted revenues to estimated actual revenues as of June 30 of 2024. And then budgeted expenses compared to estimated actual expenses. General fund revenues are coming in fairly close. We did probably receive a few less grants than what we anticipated because of the cushions we built in for grants, those unknown grants. On the general fund expenditure side, the estimated actual expenditures are lower mostly due to vacancy savings, less grant expenditures. When we lower the revenue side, we have to lower the expenditure side as well. And then we do have some capital outlay carryforwards. And a reminder that carryforward is a term that we use to reflect the specific amounts that will not be spent as of June 30 because that service or supply was not received by June 30. So we take those funds and we carry them forward into the following fiscal year. For the HERF revenues, you can see that there were a few grants that we did not receive that we thought perhaps we would. And though we did have quite a bit more in investment earnings in every fund than we originally anticipated. HERF and flood control expenditures, you'll see on the expenditure side, the, there are many carryforwards associated with the projects involved. And in the revenue or the enterprise funds, the expenditure over the revenue is generally due to carryforward of the projects that aren't completed as well. Next table looks similar, but this is a reflection of the available resources and depending on the funds, sometimes referred to as fund balance. Again, you'll see the funds listed down the left-hand side. Across the top, we start with the available resources or the fund balance at July 1st of this fiscal year in 2023. The estimated revenue, what we estimate the expenditures to be by June 30 for both of those, any transfers in or out are reflected. And then we, that gives us the estimated available resources as of June 30 of this fiscal year. In the transfers out of the general fund, that's largely due to the transfers to HERF for the additional street projects and the transfers to the CIP for the construction sales tax portion of the general fund. The budget stabilization reserve is excluded from the available resources above. As of June 30, 24, we anticipate the general fund will have a reserve of just under $33 million. The water fund and about $3 million, wastewater fund, 3.6 million, and the HERF, just under a million. So now we'll take a look at some of the assumptions that are being considered as we estimate for next fiscal year. We're going to first look at revenues. We are still reviewing projections for revenues expenditures. We do anticipate some cost savings and we monitor the expenses closely. And any revenue adjustments, particularly in sales taxes, are being factored in as we receive additional information. So we'll do that up until the last moment that we possibly can before the documents are due for presentation to you. Due to the two-month lag in the reporting of sales taxes, we especially monitor those revenues because we know that there's about two months worth of revenue that we won't know about till it's, well, for lack of a better phrase, too late. So we try to be conservative again with those estimates. And then again, as I mentioned in the prior presentation, projections for revenues have been adjusted to reflect more accurate projections based upon the actual activity for the current year. So we try to use the current year as a base for the FY25 projections, but we do adjust that base for any of the anomalies that might exist there. Things that we're looking at on the projected revenue side, the revenue estimates again are based upon existing trends. We've, when we look at historical trends, we do take into consideration any of the pandemic impacts that we, you know, that we felt. We, we don't count that as a normal, a normal year. That was something that ended up kind of working out better for us than we anticipated. But all of that's taken into consideration. We're not inflating future revenues because we had inflated revenues at that time. Again, as mentioned, we are holding the property tax rate flat. That's, that's something that we've been doing for the last several years. So we leave the primary property tax rate flat. We leave it the same. The county provides us with the estimated assessed valuations for the upcoming year. And that calculation then by applying our rate to those new assessed values gives us our property tax revenue. So the additional revenue that we anticipate for FY25 in property taxes is about a little over $400,000. That includes $105,000 worth of new construction. So new construction is not due to the, is not a factor related to the existing properties that are being taxed. If we did lower the rate in order to produce the same revenue as in FY24, then we would need to reduce our property tax revenue by $302,000, which would require a reduction in the operating expenses in the general fund of $302,000. And again, utility rate study rates have been implemented as of November 1st of 23. And as I stated prior, we are monitoring those very closely. There it goes. So we did want to talk about the legislative impacts that we're feeling in the general fund associated with action at the state level. The state increased the urban revenue share, the state income tax, they increased that rate as far as what the cities receive. They increased it from 15% to 18%, which increased our revenues for two fiscal years. So over those two fiscal years, we're receiving about $2.6 million in additional one-time revenue. However, the flat tax, the flat income tax will take effect for FY26. And that actually gives us a net result of a loss in revenue overall. So that loss of state shared income tax beginning in 2024, which is, hits us in fiscal year 2026, you'll see in the table there that the first year, we anticipate a net loss of $400,000. And then that ramps up as we go year to year. So FY29 and beyond, we will be losing $1.2 million as a result of that change. We have one improvement district, improvement district number two, the London Bridge Plaza. This district assesses themselves a property tax and it covers expenses such as utilities and the landscaping contract at that location, the London Bridge Plaza area. We're proposing to hold that flat rate. No changes have been made by staff or requested by the district property owners. So we're leaving that as it is. And that rate is the .737 per $100 in assessed value. And it generates revenue in the amount of 17,000, a little over 17,000 each year. The fund balance as of the prior fiscal year is just under $8,000. So we do have a tiny cushion there should anything come up that is not anticipated. Now we'll take a look at the expenditure side now that we have taken a look at what we expect on the revenue side. We'll walk through some of the variances and assumptions regarding those expenditure estimates. And then the more detail will be provided at your May 9 budget workshop. On the expenditure side, things that we have included so far in, in the numbers and in our work papers, the step increases that are available for city employees as they move through their grades are included. The, we have included a wage stabilization adjustment of 3.5% to help us keep pace with market changes. There were changes to the retirement rates and actually we had a reduction in the fire PSPRS rate of one percentage point. Police remained flat. And there was actually a slight decrease on the ASRS side for the general employees, non-public safety. So overall, we're saving about $85,000 from those changes. So relatively small number, but still an important number for us. We appreciate having an additional 85,000 in the general fund. We have taken into consideration the amount that we're paying for materials and supplies due to the inflation that has been occurring and some items have gone back down, but others have not. So we're trying to reflect a realistic number for those costs in FY25. And then we do budget a certain amount of salary savings due to vacancies because we know those are going to occur. Historically, we've budgeted for about $800,000 in salary savings due to those vacancies. It's probably a larger number, except that we offset it with any PTO payouts that have to occur when that employee leaves as well. So the net, we're estimating to be about an $800,000 savings. And as in the past, we've included $1 million in the general fund as contingency funding. One thing that we do in the budget process on the operating side is we tell the departments, we give them their base budget. This is their, their current budget less any one-time expenditures, and that's their starting point for those things that are ongoing essential routine items. Then they propose and they submit requests for any, what we call supplemental items. This year, the departments requested about, in all funds, about 18.6 million dollars worth of supplemental requests. Just under 12 million of that was for the general fund. Most of those were one-time expenditures. And a lot of that's due to the deferred maintenance that we've mentioned in the various areas that we have. We're looking at tentatively approving, since we do have available funding in the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund, even after the budget stabilization reserve. The general fund, we're looking at approximately 9.9 million of additional supplemental items in the HERF fund, an additional 1.7 million, water 1.8 million, wastewater 1.7 million. So that'll give you an idea of what we are planning and what we'll be bringing forward to you and at the May meeting. And that concludes the general overview portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. While we're on that, can you just go back to what you just said about, so 18.6 million in supplemental requests were requested? Of that, 9 million were, are being presented to us for approval?
Of the, well, it'll be nine, of the general fund portion of 12 million that were requested, we are proposing to, to approve 10 of that 12.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
Comments, questions, thoughts from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, can you tell me if that wage stabilization includes our part-time employees?
Yes, it does.
And then with this, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but I've had some questions about some of our part-time employees and whether or not they're included in our employee, employee assistance plan. Do we, are our part-time employees included in that?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, that's part of our healthcare and benefits package. Right now, part-time employees are not included in the EAP, but we do provide them with services when needs arise. We have the death and the family.
That's what I was referring to because we have.
And we brought counselors in for our team because of that.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, and this may be a question for Bobby to sneak on up here. But for the wage stabilization adjustment of three and a half percent, can we paint the picture of why that's needed? Are we having a tough time getting people? Are we having a tough time keeping people? Here, I think it'll be good for the public here and all that good stuff. Thank you, Bobby.
Good job, guy. Good timing right there. Yeah.
I would have hurried faster, but. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Moses, the 3.5% is a continuing attempt to not fall further behind in terms of our wages and where we are compared to our market comparable cities. One of the challenges that we have that we're looking forward to addressing in the near future is COVID played quite a havoc on, on what is going on in our market comparable cities. And so our markets are all over the place. And so part of this is trying to not fall further behind while we try and figure out, do we need to look at different cities as our market comparisons? Do we need to look at different jobs as market comparisons? So part of what we're proposing to do is take a closer look at that during the coming year. And the wage stabilization is intended to make sure we don't fall further behind.
And I'm a, from a business standpoint, I'm a, I'm a bigger fan of making it right and then not, not this nickel and dime every single year. I'm a bigger, state of Arizona did it to us, minimum wage where every single year it's like, I'd rather just get to where we want to be and then, and then let's ride a little bit, let's get normal. But I, so you spoke to our markets, can you speak to our vacancies or at least the number of people applying to our vacancies? Are we having any luck? You know what I mean? I mean, wages should be tied to, are we getting qualified people to apply for the jobs?
I have a profound answer, Mayor and Council, of sort of. One of the challenges that we have right now is we are able to attract great talent. We have good people coming in and just as people are coming in, they're going back out the door. So one of the problems that we have is we've implemented a lot of initiatives for recruitment to cause people to want to come to work for us. Because of where we're located in a lot of our jobs, particularly in the public safety field, we've become a training ground for people to move on to other places. And so our, our vacancy rate is pretty stable. It hadn't changed a whole lot, but it's not because we're not able to attract talent and bring the talent in. It's because no sooner do we get people in the door and somebody comes along from another city and says, hey, another city and says, hey, we'll pay you $4 more an hour for your firefighter, or whatever it might be. And they're chasing the dollar right now. Part of what we're hoping when we take a closer look at our compensation is, throwing money at it is not always the answer, but I agree with you. We need to get closer to what the right answer is and then monitor that carefully. And each year, try and make sure that we're competitive and that we're able to attract good talent. We're working very hard to put in programs in place like apprenticeship programs and bringing interns in and trying to do things to create our own pipeline of employees that are local to Havasu, that want to live, stay, and work here, and to try and grow those people into jobs. So there's not a simple answer to this. It's a variety of approaches to try and figure out ways to address the needs of the city, attract good talent, but we also need to find ways to retain them.
I would say absolutely. One of the most expensive things you can do is just continually be training for the same position over and over and over again. And so that's why I'd rather just get to where we need to be than this little bit at a time. But I trust in you to have a comprehensive plan to get us to where we need to be.
That's the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kimbleton.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Not so fast, Bobby.
This is kind of a goofy question here, but I was, the paper the other day listed like where we lost people. And do we, I don't know if you're even allowed to say this, like, do we ask people when they're leaving, what they're leaving? Like, do they explain that to you? Are they leaving based on money? Are they leaving because of, you know, do we know that?
Councilmember Lynn, the answer to that is yes, we do ask them. We have an exit interview that we give every employee, including part-time employees, when they leave, asking them the reason that they leave. Some of them are truthful, and some of them are trying to leave to make sure they don't burn bridges. And so we get a lot of different answers. The major reasons why people tell us they're leaving are money and housing.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
This is a great conversation, and it's interesting. My husband was driving into Phoenix yesterday, and he said, there's a big billboard across the highway right now. It says, we're recruiting starting wage police officers, $117,000 a year starting wage. And realistically, chief over there is like, hey, where do I sign up? No, yeah, no. But what I'm saying about this, though, that there's a real, the atmosphere, the environment in which we live in is small town. How many of our local police officers are going to want to go to Maricopa and deal with what they have to deal with there? Of course, our crime rate, we have, the bigger we grow, the more they have to do too. I personally think they're worth $117,000 a year because I'd never want to do that job out of all the jobs I've done, and I've been in septic tanks. So, you know, but the moral of the story is, we are really in a situation about morale and lifting up our employees to want to live in our small community. Because in reality, we are a small town. I deal with it with mechanics and all the things that the city is dealing with, we deal with as well. And so it's a major swing of how do you encourage people to stay? How do you get them to love their job? How do you get them to show up? And I know that Colleen and I've talked about it, don't you just love coming to work here? Because the building is so beautiful, and her office is beautiful. So I may not be saying a whole lot, but I think I am, that we can't keep chasing outside markets that are huge metropolitan, multi-million-dollar tax revenues when we're small towns still. How do we keep that small? It's a very big balancing act. And I really question that person that's lived here their whole life or the last 10 years, the last 20 years, and then they're packing up all of a sudden to go to a big city. I question how much of that is money and how much of that is they just are tired of what's going on within their certain atmosphere that they're showing up? Because we all go to work and spend more time sometimes at work than we do with our own families, and it's really important, the atmosphere.
Councilmember Campbell, I 100% agree with you that creating a place where people love and want to come to work is extremely important. I will tell you that when you look at where do you lose your labor to and where do we get our labor from, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Surprisingly enough, we are not losing a lot of our labor right now to the Valley. Where we're losing them to are hiring incentive programs in Kingman, Bullhead, Las Vegas, Henderson. So it's not necessarily places that you would expect. But the truth of the matter is, those markets are in the same position that we're in. And so everybody's trying to come up with ways to attract and retain people. I still believe that the key is to grab kids while they're in high school, junior high school, elementary school, and show them the opportunities that are available here and what a great place this is to live and grow up in. And then knowing that you have a successful career when you finish is a great strategy. And that's a major emphasis of the programs, our CIT programs, the apprenticeship programs we're trying to put in place is to do just that, to give kids a reason to want to continue to work here.
Thank you, Dr. Kimbleton. Any other questions, comments from members of council on this presentation? Councilmember Dolan, I just can't see your face. I'm not sure if you have any questions or comments.
I'm nodding yes, everything's fine.
Perfect, all right. Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, I just want to make sure that the council has a discussion on the tax rate. So as James had mentioned earlier, the tax rate is looking to stay the same in this proposed budget. We're going to learn more about what that means in our next hearing on the budget. But the entire budget's predicated on this tax rate. So if there's concerns, now is the time to talk about that. We have not increased the tax rate, and this will be, I believe, our sixth year that the tax rate has remained the same. We have had a truth in taxation hearing each of those years because the revenue has increased. During the Great Recession, the council did not increase the rate at all, but they adjusted it for new construction. So they would adjust the rate back and forth just to take into account new construction that occurred in that year by keeping the rate flat for the other property owners because of the economic conditions that were going on. Good policy at that time, but now this council's dealing with some of those impacts with the deferred maintenance that we're continuing to talk about. Because those are revenues that we weren't able to use as the community grew to take care of roads, water, sewer, parks, all of the developments, all of the things that we're talking about. And so there's two schools of thought. We've seen, you know, lowering the rate and what that does to revenues, and then what that does as an impact to the community. Or again, as I said earlier, the budget has a plan. How can we plan to ensure that we have road networks and infrastructure and amenities when we don't have that revenue source? So now is the time, if any of the members of council or any of my colleagues have any thoughts about changing the rate, because our next hearing is going to have these revenues in it based on the proposal. And then we're going to go into tentative budget adoption, final budget option, and then tax levy increase. And so then is not the conversation because we'd already done all the work and predicated. So I just wanted to make sure council is comfortable with.
Mr. Mayor?
This rate? Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I definitely support keeping the rate the same. We also got to realize why we see that increase. We see that increase is because property values are going up. You know, that's a great thing for our citizens, that their values are going up. But, you know, like I said, we have an effect on the rate, and I think it also kind of keeps up for inflation and what the city provides with those tax dollars. So, you know, like I said, I think a lot of this is, it can be perspective of how people look at it. Well, you raised our taxes. No, your property value went up, and because of that, you know, just like if you're, you know, taxes could stay the same, but if you make more money, you're going to pay more in taxes because you made more money, not because the taxes went up. So, you know, like I said, I just think people need to realize it's because the property values, and that's not a city issue. That's what the county, county assessor decides what the property values are and if they have concerns about that. I mean, there's different things they can do with the county. But I definitely support, you know, keeping it, like I said, we're not raising the rate, we're keeping it the same. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Dolan. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on that. I agree, keeping it the same. We're not raising taxes. Some people, their property values go up. So the reason their property values go up is because of what our staff is doing with the infrastructure and everything else that's going on in town. If they don't take care and use the flood control dollars and take care of the flooding of the roads, and they don't take care of the wastewater and the water, property values go down. And we're using that money for good reasons. It's not that we're collecting money so we can, you know, fly off to Europe. It's, we're using it here in the city, and the reason their property values are going up is because we're improving our city. So I would definitely do that. And since I have the microphone, if I may, one more issue. And one thing, it's not a whole lot of money. Jill brought up the, that we don't have to pay so much into PSPRS and ARS. One of the things I'd like to look at, it's only a small amount of money, but maybe continue where we're at and use those funds towards unfunded liability. If we could take a look and see where that's at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. And I know we're changing topics for a second, but I also agree with you on that, Councilmember Lynn. The first thing that was, I wrote down during your presentation was that is, why in the world would they lower the rate? The fund is not even healthy. What are they talking about? They need to manage those funds so much better than they're doing. So I would agree, more dollars to help offset that unfunded liability. And again, it's a little amount, but it's an amount that we're been paying. So. That's where we're Campbell? Yeah, sorry, now we confused the whole conversation. So we're talking about property tax rate and PSPRS rate.
I'm going back to property tax.
Thank you. Bring it back for us.
Bring it back.
Yes.
I do not mind keeping the tax rate the way it is. It's the messaging that I'm always worried about. Because then, most of the people, as we know, the last couple years, you know, when they do the tooth and dress taxation, it's in the newspaper. And, you know, I've jumped down that rabbit hole myself, and it probably wasn't where I needed to be at that time, for sure. But what I do like to do is explain it and message it in a certain way. You have $407,000 we're possibly thinking about. And one of the comments that Councilmember Moses just stated was residential roads or infrastructure, like wherever we see that truth in taxation that may lift up, is there a way that we can message it to say, we're going to take that money and put it towards, hopefully not any more excessive pavement preservations, but whatever it takes to help with the residential portion of it, almost just allocate it. It's still in the general fund, maybe because it's kind of a maintenance project, or they move it over to HERF to help with residential. But the messaging to the citizens would be, yes, your house rates went up, we understand it, we get it, you shouldn't have to go through a ripply road and a pothole to get to your front driveway. And $400,000 doesn't get you very far, but it goes back into the road infrastructure with proper messaging.
Well, I think the messaging is up to us as the council, that we have to tell the story of this large plan. You know, we're talking about $400,000 in what may end up being a $150 million spending plan potentially. I mean, we haven't seen all of the cones together. But, yeah, I think we have to tell the story of the whole story of what is occurring. And it's all of the, today, it's all of the projects we heard. Next, or two weeks from now, it'll be all of the operating components to that. So.
I agree with you, but the direction that we aren't doing here is we're dealing with, we have some excessive pavement preservation, again, in our most residential neighborhoods. And it is mind, well, you know, I'm a roads person, so it's mind-blowing to me to see some of these roads and the way they look, and some of their curbs are this big, and the one-up-and-down smoke tree that just drives me crazy that we had a rolled curb, and then we laid out a curb on top. Speaking of handicap, that's so incredibly dangerous. But what I'm saying is, we are doing a lot of core projects. We're doing a lot of commercial projects. I'm saying, how do we say to the residents that, yes, we know your home values are going up, including the commercial as well. And I know you're building new homes, but you're building a new home on an old street, and the street is pretty rough. So I guess we don't see this anywhere, that if that designated amount can be saying that we're going to, we're going to address residential roads with that funding. That's the, that's the direction I'm going here with the conversation.
I think you're telling a great story. I think you go tell that story over and over again.
It's not a true story.
It's a true story. It's a very true story. Yeah, that's what's happening. I mean, it's all part of this larger plan, and I think that's the good story to go out and tell of what's happening with your tax dollars. I mean, we're stewards of the tax dollars, and we're balancing all of these different components. And that's the story we have to tell. Any additional comments from members of council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Joan de Zero, sorry, back again. I had just a clarification on the expenditures, where it talked about 3.5% salary steps. Are we going to, I'm assuming that, I'm just trying to understand your process, when we come May 9, that's when we will hear about the merit increases for employees and their healthcare and benefits? Or is the 3.5, we just give step increases to employees at this point?
Yeah, so what this proposal is, there's two different things. So our employees are, if they're eligible for a step program, there's a payment program that's put into place that if you are eligible for a step increase within your position, as is presented now, they will be eligible for that on July 1. In addition, they'll get a 3% or 3.5% wage stabilization adjustment, and then healthcare and benefits is a separate item that would be discussed at that time.
And that'll come up in May 9?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please.
Hello, council mayor. I'm going to wear multiple hats here today, but I want to speak as, I was a graduate of the Supervisor Excellence Academy, if you ask my staff. I called it Be a Better Boss class. When we speak to retention, really, it is the atmosphere. I know some of you spoke to that. Sometimes it is keeping up with inflation and wage, but it's also the training in our city has done so well at trying to invest in its staff. Like I said, I went through a program that, and that just gave me further my skills into providing that for my staff for a, for good morale, to promote a healthy work environment and to continue to do better. It's through that, through the, as well as the Employee Appreciation Committee. So that's with the city manager, and like I said, Bobby, with the training and the investment and us and our city. Yes, sometimes that is through inflation and through increases. And also, like I said, the training in which we provide and how we invest in our staff, because that's what's going to keep us. I have a job loyalty problem, a lot of my staff do too, and I appreciate that. But we love working for this city, and we come here, and we love our jobs. And that is all the investment that has been put into us by all these different programs that has reached us in different ways. So I appreciate that. And then also, I also volunteer in this city. I am the president for the soccer league, so I really appreciate hearing, just like I said, the budget and the maintenance that's going into all these different things, like fields. I came here to raise my kids here. I work in this for the city. I also volunteer for this city. And it is so important to continue to invest in our future. And I know working with some of these other nonprofit organizations that are working for some of these sports, they're willing to invest and work with the city and partner with the city to help provide some of these things. So I don't want to forget reaching out to them through this process because we can help too, to provide this for our community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
James Maniachi again. In the budget overview, projected revenues continued. At the very bottom, there's the four boxes showing the loss. And I'd appreciate a more complete explanation of that.
Yeah, so those are.
Does that mean you will have that much less in state income tax revenue?
Correct. Yeah, so what, when the legislature adjusted Arizona to a flat tax rate, there was a couple of approaches they put in to phase that in. The city, for the first couple of years, actually got a windfall. We got more revenue than we normally would have received had the structure not changed. And then in subsequent years, starting with 2026, then we're actually going to be getting a less amount that will continue to grow up to 2029 and beyond. And those are what those negative numbers are there. So in 2026, the loss of the state income tax portion that we would have received otherwise, had the legislature not changed current tax policy, we're going to lose $401,527. And up to 2029, we'll lose $1.2 million going forward because of that tax policy change.
Okay, now, does the urban revenue sharing include more than income tax?
That's the state income tax of our residents. That's the state income tax of, of our residents. It's just what that fund is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to address council on this item? All right, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Are there any final thoughts or comments from members of the council before I turn over to Mr. Knutson for, for wrap up? All right, Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, team. I did a couple, a couple of quick thoughts to add to the conversation that was ongoing for the sake of, of the public. We're well aware of the city perspective, but we talked about property taxes. A lot of times we have those conversations at, at a public meeting, the general public doesn't understand that we're not talking about your full property tax bill. So the, the city's share of the property tax that's on your full property tax bill is somewhere between, and it varies between bills, right? But 7% to 10% on average is when you're paying that full property tax bill each and every year through the, to the county, about 7% or 10% of it is at, that's the, that's the city's portion of that. So I want to make, I want to make a note of that. In perspective, our total, this year's budget, we, $6.4 million total in a property tax levy that comes to the city. So that's far lower than what our, our residents are paying to the county, for example, for, for county services. If you look at city sales tax collections and, and our bed, bed tax and is that's, you know, 37 million in comparison, right? So our, our main source for our services, for the general fund, is going to come from the state shared revenues that we had, I just had a conversation about, that's another $30 million. So, and then again, compare that to the $6.4 million in the property tax collections. So it's important for us to identify that number and I just want to put that in perspective. Sometimes when we have conversations here at the city level, at staff and council and otherwise, that the takeaway is like, oh, you're going to, my property tax bill is going to go up as, as a whole. So MCC, county, different flood districts, there's a whole lot of lines on your property tax bill and the city is, is one of those. And by the way, the, the city did forego, did remove the, one of those lines a couple of years ago when we disbanded the irrigation and drainage district. So that was a savings on the property tax bill for our, our residents when it comes to property tax as well, too. And if I can, it was kind of mentioned by a member of the public about healthcare costs. We're very, very proud of the fact that we, we did negotiate rates this year. So as, as we know, the Hava City City, we're in the same healthcare trust as Bullhead City, Kingman and the Hava City School District. So it's the four entities that work together for the, the good of our employees and very, very proud of the fact that we were able to negotiate with our broker a 0% increase to the city and a 0% increase to all of our employees for, for the, for this budget year coming forward. So that's, that's a huge victory. So that was the goal, is to, is to be able to come back to the employees and saying, you're getting the same great benefits as before with a 0% increase. Actually, we can say there's some slight increases in terms of benefits that, that are available. But again, 0% increase to the city, 0% increase to, to our employees. So that's a, that's a big, big deal as we talk about retention and attraction and the things that Colleen talked about, if we're, you know, that includes, you know, training and tools and appreciation. And then, of course, it's, it's budget time, so we, we have to talk about the wage stabilization, our step increases, and then our comp and class study as we work into that. We'll talk more about that on May 11th, but some good conversations all around and, and again, great team. Special thanks to Jill, special thanks even more so to Angie, because she's the one that's, that's all that input and all the sweat and tears that, that's coming through, that's, that's all Angie Bachan. So she's phenomenal and we want to thank her for all she does. And, and, and standing right next to Angie is Allison Blum and she's been phenomenal throughout this entire process as well, too. Of course, special thanks to the direction that, that Jill Olson leads in, in this regard as well, too. Across the board, amazing team, amazing directors, amazing requests, doing the best we can with the dollars that we have, trying to be as conservative as we can, trying to be creative in terms of solutions and, and then doing all that with listening to the council, listening to the public and trying to prioritize projects and try to have this crazy puzzle take place where we're trying to match up our resources with the community needs. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilman, and I look forward to more conversations on the operating budget at our next work session.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. And again, thank you to the team. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. Be kind, we'll see you next time.